Microphones on, cell phones off. Okay. This is a work session for the Marquette Township Board. Today is Thursday, September 16th, 2021. It's just four o'clock. If you do roll call, Randy, please.
Okay. Treasure Johnson is absent and excused. Trustee LaRue here. Trustee Winslow.
Present.
Trustee Iverson.
Here.
Trustee Martz.
Present.
Clerk Rattar is here and Supervisor Duran.
Here.
Staff present is Manager Cangus, Fire Chief Dan Shanahan, and Accountant Lois Stonehouse.
Okay. Do we have any inquiries through email?
We did not.
Okay. Looks like we don't have any public.
Nope.
For the Zoom. Okay. So we don't have any coordinate comment. You're right into policy discussion. We're expecting to do fiscal year 2022 general fund budget and the fire fund budget if we get to them. Do you want to field questions first? Or do you want to kind of go over your cover letter? What's your thought?
If anyone's had a chance to look at it and has questions that maybe we can knock out right away, that might help. But ultimately, once we go through, hopefully all of the questions are going to be answered anyway.
Anybody have anything specific they want to address right away?
I should state that the general fund budget proposed in your binder is substantially the same as the preliminary that was emailed on the 120th day before the start of the fiscal year.
And you have the manager's explanation also of what he's doing.
Correct. Since that email was sent, the biggest changes we've been dealing with are in the solid waste fund. Some of that you will be dealing with next Tuesday at your regular meeting. Some changes that are impacting our contractor as a result of the recycling carts. And I'm calling it unintended consequences, but we'll save that for then and the solid waste budget discussion in our next session. There's just some things that unfortunately we didn't know were going to happen. It's taking the contractor an hour longer per day with these carts, with the hydraulic tipper dumping it. It takes longer than the guy jumping up grabbing a bucket and setting it back down. An hour longer per day.
Is that on the agenda? Did you get the letter in the packet or?
It's in my report.
Okay.
And Lenny has an action item.
Okay.
It's in the packet.
Okay.
Which way are they doing it?
They're doing it the new way, which is tipping the cart into the truck.
Manually?
With the tipper that's attached to the truck. It's the hydraulic.
I've watched them and I've seen them do it both ways.
Okay.
They throw the garbage in first with my hand.
No, no, that was just the recyclables.
Oh, okay.
I've seen them, you know, pick the whole can up and just dump it in.
All right. What you're telling me is different than what they presented us.
I'll watch them again, you know. Just keep an eye. I've seen them, but I've seen them do it both ways.
It's certainly possible that they are.
Yeah.
Well, that'll be a discussion for the public works budget.
Okay.
And for next Tuesday's board meeting as well, regular meeting.
I'll try to watch for it Monday then.
But it's just amazing that why didn't they take that into consideration? I mean, it's not their first time doing this.
They did, actually.
Be careful there what you say. It wasn't their idea to do this. It was our idea.
I know that.
And we changed the contract on them 10 years in by adding these carts.
So they could take the carts and tip them and not use the arm?
Well, they're heavier. That's the issue.
They absolutely are.
It is bulky.
And our residents could go back to using the thing they used before.
Well, yeah, then we have the issue of not recycling as much because you can't fit as much in the tub.
So we're recycling more because of the carts?
Let's keep in mind tonight is general fund. I'm only pointing that out because that's really what we have to do.
Okay, well, there'll also be some good questions to ask.
We really have to spend some time looking at the solid waste fund because our expenses are increasing far more rapidly than our revenues. So we have to make some adjustments in the services we provide, I believe. Our first Wednesday rubbish in particular is costing us a lot of money because the equipment they have there is requiring we rent more dumpsters. We're actually seeing the same customers coming month after month. So a very small percentage of our customers are generating all the cost. We need to put limitations on that, in my opinion, or these costs will continue to be out of control. We went from a $20,000 annual expenditure to $45,000-ish, so.
John, I didn't, I heard you say that the same customers are coming back. What was that about?
So the average host in our township probably, you would think reasonably, would make one or two trips a year to rubbish day because of big items that they won't pick up curbside. Some customers are there every month. Where are they getting all this from? I don't know. But because all of our residential customers are paying for it, I think we need to put a limitation on it when we can't afford it anymore. We need to limit how people.
At least be fair, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, let's save the discussion.
We have some ideas and we want to quantify it for you, what we think, the measures we want to put in place will save us. And it'll make a big difference. We don't want to increase our monthly garbage fee by $3 a month. But if we continue down the road, we are, we might have to. Because you have tipping fees on the landfill, annual cost of living adjustment in our hauling contract, which is in the contract. We added two hours a week in the summer good months for the contractor to do the same amount of work that they want to be compensated for, and justifiably so. They're expecting it's going to be longer in the winter because this hydraulic equipment doesn't work good in the cold. All of those add up to more expenses than we're currently collecting for. So we have to make some changes, I believe.
Well, we'll save that discussion as a superintendent.
I got one last question on the monthly fees or the monthly dumping. They track everybody. I mean, you take your name and everything. Is there a way that they can track or write down, have Andy or whoever's up there write down what they're dumping? And then we can see maybe, you know, where this stuff might be coming from.
Well, maybe. Some of the things that Lenny and I have talked about is, are people bringing their general household garbage up there because it's easier than putting it out every week? That's not what it's there for.
No.
And the reason we think that might be the case is there's two particular neighborhoods that are there in high numbers every month. We don't know. We have to figure that out.
Maybe they think that's what they're supposed to do, too.
Well, this is for the stuff that they won't pick up curbside, not for your household garbage. And maybe we need to do an educational process on that when we tell people, you can't be coming back here every month because we can't afford it. You're taking advantage of your neighbors. We don't know where some of these people are coming up with all this stuff.
Well, we've had this problem for 20-plus years where people are bringing garbage from wherever to, yeah. It's about the bag and tag system, you know, it's all. You know, there are people in my neighborhood who have six bags of garbage out there for two people. Isn't that right? So there's lots of discussion about all that, so.
People need to learn if they take advantage of the system, it's going to cost everybody. And that's what's happening.
Right, but they don't, individual people don't care what it costs.
Yeah.
Probably a good education.
That's why the bag and tag thing happens.
I think the education, I think it'd be a good thing to bring up and discuss that people know about it because sometimes they might be doing it without thinking.
Well, I think people are doing it intentionally as well because this happens anywhere you have this kind of program.
But you want to make sure that they're careful.
They take it from camp, wherever.
But you have to make sure you tell them they understand it and then if they violate it, then you got a concerted problem. Can we justify what we do?
Yep.
Okay.
All right. Great start to the general fund discussion, isn't it?
Well, same here.
That's done. Next.
All right. So getting into revenues, which is where we always start. This year, we took a little more conservative approach to tax revenues than I think we did. Well, I should say that in the 2022 proposed budget, we took a little more conservative approach than we did in 2021. And part of that is due to, I'm going to call it communication breakdown between Randy and I in that I didn't know that he and Dulcey were already calculating a number that was conservative due to tax tribunal cases. I think the number that went in to the final budget for tax revenues was the actual calculation with no reductions. I didn't know that there should have been a reduction in there. So if you look at the original budget versus estimated total under taxes, it's about a $35,000 difference. This year's tax revenue is already taking into account that difference. So it's a smaller number than either of the two shown. And I believe a very conservative number, which should be a pretty safe one. We should get over this, maybe 1.931 million. Keep in mind that that 1.931 million is comprised of four different elements. It's the general operating revenue, roads, police, and recreation. The general operating is 1.295. The roads is just under 400,000 is 395,796. That number will come up a little bit later. Police is 105,632. And rec is 134,195. And keep in mind that 134 number because when we get to the rec number, you'll see for our entire operating budget, the recreation costs are below that mileage number. So we're not spending everything we asked for and we need to figure out what we're going to do moving forward because we have a two-year mileage. Maybe we take a two-year break or something along those lines, but something to consider. Ultimately, we have to make sure we're going to continue to pay for the staff that we need to do what we promised. Other changes in revenues. You'll see under licenses and permits, we're estimating 30,000 in revenue for the year, even though the original budget was 6,000. That can fluctuate from year to year. As you see in prior years, we're in the seven to eight, 8,500 range. We went with a conservative number there. The state revenue sharing came right from the Treasury website, what they're projecting for the next fiscal year. Keep in mind, the state's fiscal year is a little bit different than ours. So the tail end of next year will hopefully be a better number than what they're projecting for the state's fiscal year. There's no guarantee of that, but generally speaking, that number has slowly been going up. Nothing in there for sale of assets this year because we don't have a car to sell. We're not anticipating anything else that's worth predicting revenue for. The transfers are all status quo and they all come, they're all tied directly from the other budgets. So those exact same numbers you'll see in the fire budget, the liquor budget, liquor control, and wastewater budget. Those numbers are all identical. So revenues of 2.61 million, which is down from the current year of 2.63, cost status quo, right? Not really much change there. The reduction in tax revenue is offset by a slight increase in state revenue sharing. That's about really the biggest difference. The only other thing you should be aware of, this budget does not include ARPA funds. We should be receiving our first half of that allotment this year. And we'll do a budget amendment when we get it. And our total is 407,789, of which we'll get 50% this year, so a little over 200,000, and the other 200,000 next year. That money has strings attached to it. If you can't demonstrate that you've had a revenue loss using the formulas that Washington gave us, then we have to spend it under the other three categories. So during our strategic planning coming up, we'll have to figure out what's the most appropriate way to spend that money. Hopefully, Lois is going to run the calculations for us and it's going to say we've had 400,000 worth of revenue losses, which I think we probably have. I just don't know if the formula is specific enough to account for a lot of the refunds we've had to do for tax tribunal cases. So until we crunch those numbers, we won't really know for sure.
So it's 400,799?
407,789. And there's a chance that we'll get slightly more than that, too, because there's some communities that have chosen not to take their share. And there's two options. They either say they don't want it or they do nothing. Under one of those options, the money goes back to the state, which in my opinion, we should never let happen. The other option is it goes back to the rest of the people that actually asked for their share. So it gets divvied up. It might amount to a couple grand more. I mean, the people that, the communities that have chosen not to take their contribution, ARPA funds, are the small ones that don't even want to deal with the paperwork. So they're getting the smallest amounts anyway if they actually ask for it.
Are all our tax refund, are they all taken care of, no? Do we have any more for this year?
Though, there's still more in the works. But I can tell you, between our attorney and assessor, we're probably giving to results in the most affordable way possible. And we'll talk about that in a little bit when we get to professional services, which is two cost centers down from where we're at now. So on to expenditures. First of all, in my message, it says the yellow highlighted areas are the areas that are yet to be determined due to contract negotiations. In your binder, it's the gray shaded areas and it's got a TBD for to be determined in there. And that's because our contract negotiations aren't done yet. So the numbers that are showing are an assumption that the contractor extended for a year. There's no guarantee that's going to happen, as you all know. We'll see where things go, whether it comes in better or worse, the same. We don't know that for a little while yet. In fact, I have received no, no response from either unit as of now. We knew asking was going to be a couple weeks because one of their representatives went on vacation for two weeks the day after we presented to them. And we're kind of waiting to hear back from the other unit, so. We'll see where that goes. Otherwise, under Township Board, you will see we did increase our dues and subscriptions. That's due to the MTA subscription, that online premium for the education. So that matches the proposed year end for this year of 8,400, up $2,000 from the original budgeted amount. Travel and conference, we kind of return that to pre-pandemic activity since we're expecting more conferences to be in person. You might recall last year, we pretty much knocked those down to nothing. And then printing and publishing, we're just averaging that to the historic trend. If you compare that back to 2018, that's, I think, a pretty good number. Any questions for your budget? That would be the trustees.
The trustees, that's what I was just going to say.
So why does it say to be determined on the salary and all that stuff?
Because no action has been taken yet.
He just said that we don't have any union feedback yet.
What's shown?
Oh, so is this based on? Tell me why it's based on union feedback for the trustees.
No, it shouldn't have been.
It's not.
No.
For, okay. Let me correct myself. I was overgeneralizing. For elected and appointed officials, during last year's budget session, it was agreed upon, and this was before your time on the board.
Right.
So we have to catch you up. That's my fault.
Good idea.
It was agreed upon that we should be addressing increases on an annual basis, not wait so long in between and make big jumps. So at that time, it was discussed to provide a 2.5% increase annually to elected and appointed. That way, everyone's keeping up. There hasn't been any action taken yet, so it's showing a status quo.
Okay, I get it.
But I can tell you, Lois ran me the numbers and a 2.5% increase for the board, all positions in the appointed paid committees is less than, I would, about $1,000 total for everyone, so it's not really a big number.
So you're just not putting those numbers in?
Not until the board actually has to approve the salaries, so.
Okay, so. And my response to the to be determined was general salaries. I didn't think about just looking at the board ones, so I'm sorry for that.
So you were at me?
I was, I was looking all of them.
Okay.
I guess it's up to you to decide what you want that to be. If you want to form a consensus on it now, we can address it in the budget before everything else is figured out. It's, or we can wait until after contracts are settled. It's completely up to you.
Well, I think for the board and the committees, I think that 2.5% is a safe number. We'll just put that in because it wasn't, like I said, to the bottom line of the budget. It's $1,000, so it's really not that much.
Okay. So Lois will get me new numbers on that? Thank you. By the way, Lois is invaluable in this process. It makes my job so easy. I get spreadsheets that function properly. I don't have to guess. She was sending them to me before I was ready to receive them and that's just the staff we have.
Thank you, Lois.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you very much.
It isn't Lois's first rodeo.
It definitely is not, and I really appreciate it as a young manager. It really makes my job.
It lost you a lot there. Don't go anywhere, Lois. Don't plan on ever leaving.
All right. We're good on Township Board?
Yeah.
Okay. On to professional services. You will see the net difference is, well, it's about 6,100 over where we anticipate the end of this year, but it's also about 10,000 less than where we originally budgeted for this year. So we're kind of right in the middle of where we're currently projected to be and where we had planned to be. We've got a slight adjustment in contracted services for where we're anticipating being at the end of this year, but 15,000 less than where we originally budgeted at the beginning of the year. And that's really reflecting our historical expenditures there. Hopefully, that's a good estimation. I think history, it always gives us the best indicator unless we know the specific change. And I'm not aware of anything specific that will impact us beyond what we're showing. No change under attorney services. And that's just a reflection of the affordability of the legal services we're getting. And part of that goes to the MT, the tax tribunal decisions that we're getting or settlements. We're paying for Roger Zappa at a very affordable rate to settle these things for us or negotiate a settlement for us. We're not hiring expensive attorneys downstate that may not really get us much results. I think he's getting pretty good at this. Saying thank is probably an understatement. It's, he's definitely doing the best he can on our behalf. Engineering, whether it's engineer or architect, I think those two should be interchangeable when you see that term. I increased that $5,000 just because there is talk in the CIP of additional facilities so we can eliminate the storage that we're renting down the road. Some discussions that we've had internally is maybe that's a good way to spend our ARPA money. That may not come to fruition, but if it does, we should have a number in there that's going to help us get that building designed. So until we get through the final CIP process, strategic planning, discussion of how we're spending the ARPA funds, I'm hoping you'll agree with me that increasing that number a little bit to cover our costs if it does happen, that we design another building, we'll have some money set aside for it. And then the accounting services number, you see that's already in there under board adopted. That tells me that Lois says that's what you're going to accept because it's what the true cost is from our assessor, or not our assessor, auditor.
Per contract, yes.
Yep, thank you. Any questions there?
Lois, do you know off the top of your head if we have two storage units or three, just for argument's sake?
I believe two.
Okay. I thought Randy said three. Okay, my bad then.
If a building is to be built, do you have an idea where?
We have a couple of options. One would be on the west edge of the parking lot at the fire hall because they have some space needs for storage of off-season equipment. The other one would be up here off of the east end of our parking lot expansion. So either one gives us an option for possibly a two-story building with parking underneath, storage up above.
Could it be added on to this existing building and use our same heating and air conditioning system? Would that, would that work?
I would say off the top of my head, no, because the existing HVAC equipment is only sized for the current building. So you add more square footage, you'd have to upsize the equipment that's.
Does that have to be heated storage?
Dan says, his does need to be, yes. And if we're storing files, it would probably be a good idea to have a climate control to some extent. We don't want humidity to destroy paperwork, that kind of thing. All things that we'll have to decide when we get to that point.
I kind of looked on the north end of this building and it seems like there would be enough room there, maybe just by stepping it out, you know? Like these buildings are stepped out different, different ways to the west. So I know we got a ravine that starts there, but.
Where it ends up being located would ultimately depend on what our professionals advise is the best spot based on what we really try to do. A contractor might tell us, don't even think about two-story because of that so much cost. I think that's probably why we ended up with the building we're in right now because the original plan was a two-story building, right? So, and I wasn't here for that part. I'm only basing that on what I've heard. But going up will decrease your foundation costs. It'll increase your structural costs for the second floor. And if you're using the second floor for storage, you've got a lot of debt, dead loans, so that increases your structural support underneath. Might be six in one, half a dozen of the other. It could be five in one, seven of the other. We don't know.
Two things, when they design this building, they design it for the heating and the air for the size and the else. And then if you go to another building, if you go up and you've got more, you know, labor going up and downstairs and stuff like that, if you want to store things.
I think they would dump elevators, too.
Yeah.
Well, probably. And for that reason alone, it might not make any sense to go to a two-story. But if both stories are accessible at grade, you don't necessarily have to if they're completely separate uses. If you only have equipment storage underneath and you only have human occupied space up above, you only have to provide ADA access to the story that you have human occupancy of. The equipment storage is pretty much going to be ADA compliant by opening a garage door or van door next to it. It's hard to say. It really depends on the uses of the building.
So I don't think the CIP committee got any requests for a storage building for here.
What they, okay.
All we did was get a storage building for the fire department.
You're correct.
Okay, great, so.
I'm going to tell you what the other half of that story is and it's a little premature. We've always felt that building and grounds has been sort of dumped into a little cubby hole, so to speak, based out of the pump house, which is not necessarily appropriate for human occupancy. So we've actually recently started transitioning them over to public works. What we don't know yet is will both of those groups fit in there long-term? If they don't, we might have to incorporate space for that, those three employees into this building. So we're adding a whole nother level. We're not there yet, so you don't have anything in the CIP until we determine it. Unfortunately, the next update of the CIP after the current update may be too late because we might find out in between there. But we don't want to put something in there yet that we aren't sure we need.
Okay, so they're discussing?
Probably not. And I don't think they should because we don't really know yet that we need it.
Oh, okay.
Storage space for our files, on the other hand, we can expand a building that we need for equipment storage pretty easily for file storage. You just build a firewall in between. So that's not a significant cost increase, in my opinion. We're talking a 2,200 square foot building. I joked with Dan because the number has changed a little bit, and I think we agreed on 1,800 square feet is probably what they need. Which is not significant when you compare it to what we currently have. If we added another 20% for file storage and that's all we had in the building, we might be able to cover that with ARPA funds. But we're not, we're not to that point of discussion yet.
We don't want to be looking at this five, 10 years down the road and have to do it again either.
I agree. Yep.
Which is what people are going to say about the fire hall, fire department, you need another building. They just built a building. So we're going to have to have some good information to share with those people.
Well, I have the information. But those people don't know is the fire department is sharing space with public works at the Northwoods Pump House and that Public Works Building for equipment they are consuming somewhere.
But I think that's all.
Well, yeah, well, again, when we built that fire department building, we didn't have two ambulances. That's taken up almost a bay now, or two bays, so.
Well, and that's the equipment that's being used in public works or stored in public works facilities currently, right?
You have, yeah, we're taking, yeah, Roswell's staying in the D W.
So, I mean, that's what they got to look at. They want more services. When we built the fire department building, we didn't have planned for that, so.
We just have to have that information to share out there. Incorrect information.
I agree.
Because people love incorrect information.
But we always said that we wanted the grounds and that and public works in the same building. We didn't want them separated, you know? So if we get them up there, if we have to make some changes or add on to the side of it or put another building.
The issue with that property is it's pretty built out. And there's not much room to expand. If we did, it would be towards the rock like you just said. So it doesn't help us a lot.
We'll cover this in more depth later.
Yep. Right now, we have some placeholders in the budget because we know some of this stuff is probably going to happen. All right, on to supervisor. We will make the changes as you discussed regarding the compensation that affects the first three lines. The last two lines really go back to pre-pandemic budget, which covers conference costs. That's really where the only change is there. And unless there's any objection, I think that's pretty straightforward. Being your budget, Lynn, any concerns with that, what's in there?
No, I'm not sure that I'll even use that thousand, but who knows what the next year.
Better go into the fund balance and we'll look even better. If you don't use it, right?
Well, with the, the way it's going right now, you might not have very many in person.
Yeah.
It's hard to say. I mean, this has been very cyclical, right? So, and we're also learning how to adapt to in-person. For each cycle we go through, the precautions are different, so. Township manager, the one that's most near and dear to my heart. 98,000 sounds like a good compensation level, but you haven't decided beyond what my contract says what it's going to be. So that's, if there's going to be anything different beyond the goofy formula that we're trying to get out of the ASME contract, which I agreed to in mind because it was the lower level of annual compensation increases that our units were getting. That's in the contract for five years, so it is what it is. It's what I agreed to. So that covers the first several lines. The phone line, I'm not sure, and I'm probably going to have to have Lois look at this. Because historically, it shows that we were averaging around a thousand dollars a year for phone. Was there more than just one cell phone on there?
Yes. There was one that the township had, and then there was a reimbursement for a personal one. So there was two phones.
Oh, okay.
So that's why it's less than.
I'm certainly not asking for reimbursement on a personal phone. I'm, I'm using the township phone for township business, and that's how it's going to be. So, so there is a little bit of a savings there this year and into the future, hopefully. Travel and conference, that's increased a little bit for hopefully some in-person training. And repair and maintenance, not, nothing big. But the one increase I'm showing is for office furnishings. The chair that I'm using, I, I pulled one out of the fishbowl that fits me. It was, the nice one that Randy had was too big. Actually, Clerk Rattari claimed that one, and I don't blame him. It's, it's a nice chair, but it's too big for me.
I claimed it.
So I'm asking for, I'm asking for enough money to purchase a proper chair that, that will be comfortable and the back won't go down every time I lean against it. The one that was in the fishbowl was there for reasons because no one else would use it. I'm okay with it temporarily until I have budget to purchase it. The other one is to put the monitor on my wall, like I've talked about with a couple of you. That we can project anything from my computer screen onto when I'm meeting with people or whatever. It's the same thing as our planning department has. It's what we have in our conference room. I'm just not talking a huge screen. It's a reasonable-sized screen that.
Make it a smaller one.
It would be smaller than the three that are in here for sure. I don't need to take up a whole wall. It just needs to be big enough to share a screen for anyone that's in the office with me. There's some other, other purposes for that, but we don't need to talk about it right now. If you have questions, you can ask me offline. Clerk's budget, I think this one actually came from the clerk. So some of the comments off to the side may not be exactly correct, but I think generally that's pretty much what's, what's going on. Either no change or adjustments to the long-term trend.
The only change that's going to be in the budget for me is the civic clerk software is going to cost a little bit. I think it's like 3,000 a year. I don't know where you put that, Lois, in the budget, but. That'll be in there, and then we have some maintenance cost from, for the voting machines that the state covered year one through five, and then year six through 10, we have to cover. So it isn't very, it's in elections, okay? So that's, so other than that, and I just requested a little bit for travel and conference. I'm not planning to go to state conferences coming here. But if there's any local conferences, I'll probably go, so that's where that is.
All right.
So civic clerk is used by more than just your department?
Well, yeah, and we'll share, share it a little bit, yeah.
Share the process planning and.
So is it in here yet, did you say?
I don't know if Lois put it in, if distributed that. We'll have to see.
My opinion is if we just put it here, it's easier to track.
Yeah.
The majority of the users are general fund users anyway. If everyone's okay with that, we'll just increase the computer services from two to five.
That's fine, yeah. That'll be, that'll work. So that'll be the only change in that budget then.
Okay. Thank you. Board of review. They obviously have mandatory meetings every year. The to-be-determining lines, we'll add that two and a half percent. And Lois, where we calculate the fringe benefits that go along with it, well, social security and workers' comp. Printing and publishing, we increased that a little bit just to make sure we don't go over budget. We know publishing costs are going to continue to increase as newspapers are struggling to stay alive. They are the most expensive thing to put in a newspaper is the advertisements that were required by law to do, so. And then the miscellaneous line, this is one of the few places where we actually kept a number in there. Many cases through our other budgets, we tried to zero them out. Just because we're trying to avoid using miscellaneous to the extent possible. If we need to do a budget amendment, then you're aware of that we're doing it. Anyone see any concerns there? Still only a 2,000 annual budget. So I think pretty affordable for something that's mandated by law. Onto treasurer. The to-be-determined, we will for elected and appointed officials that will adjust that to the two and a half percent as discussed, along with the calculations that Lois does to go with it.
With the appointed official salary, it would be the deputy clerk and the deputy treasurer. And I would say leave that at 500 this year because we did increase that to 250. And then on subsequent years moving forward, we can increase that by 2.5%. Because they got a big jump this year, Lynn, so we'll do that next year for them.
A big jump to $500 for the year?
Yeah. Well, it was only 250.
I, I get your point.
Yeah. It was 50 at one time.
It was a conscious decision, and it made sense. So everything else in that budget is no change.
So someone from the township office, a staff person, is in this budget. Is that correct? Because it says salary full-time.
Yes.
Quarter-time or something.
Yeah, so, so the assistant treasurer has one per, 10% of her time in this budget. And I'll double-check with Lois because it was originally 20%, but we changed the job description down to 10%. So maybe that changes the amount in your spreadsheet. So that means the assessor's salary, full-time salary will increase.
So that means, so when you're saying 10%, is that on an 80-hour work week?
It's based on a.
Forty-hour work week.
Calendar year.
Oh, a calendar year.
10% of her time is spent doing assistant treasurer duties.
Okay, all right, just so I understand it.
It's on average.
Yeah, yeah, that part is fine. I just didn't know where the, so the dollars in the year will change.
Okay. Onto the assessors. So the salary full-time line there, whatever we reduce in the assistant treasurer will ultimately go in there at 10% of her time, right? And then the remainder of those shaded ones will, will be the result of contract negotiations with two employees. The computer services is changed to, or accurately reflect historical expenditures. And everything else is status quo except for the phone. And my new recommendation is to keep that what it is currently at 750, not 900. Because we only have one phone in that department now, we don't have two. All right? And that means the 2022 budget is going to be almost exactly the same as 2021, aside from wages and benefits. Bottom line. Elections, Lois estimated that, with probably with Randy's help, for two, two elections next year.
Yeah, we have the midterms next year, so there'll be two elections, one in August, one in November. And I guess that's about it.
Yeah.
And that's what it costs, basically, so. And if it doesn't cost that much, the money will be returned to the general fund, so.
Right. Yep. Building and grounds. Pretty status quo, again, the wages and benefits will be determined by contract negotiations. Supplies, I did increase that back up to historical numbers, taking 2020 out of the mix because that was a year we spent a lot of money on sanitizer, both the wipes and the lotions. And I think that's primarily the difference in 2020 from the prior years. So 9,200 is historically what we spend in supplies for building and grounds. We have a adjustment in water usage to historical averages. Last year was, or the current year was budgeted low. And I think part of that is due to the fact that we had staff working virtually for so long and the community center was unavailable to rent. So there should be a reduction in water usage. Then the only other thing is vehicle expense. We will be adding a third vehicle to their fleet when the fire department gets their new truck. We have in the current year budget, 25,000 to purchase that truck from the fire department for building and grounds. So they will have another vehicle to maintain, and we're increasing their vehicle expense slightly to accommodate that. We know we're getting a well-maintained truck from the fire department, so it's a matter of keeping the oil changed and the fuel tank full, that kind of thing, along with the normal brakes and everything else that comes out.
Will they be doing anything with the, I understand that some of the decals and stuff, but it'll remain orange? Or are they going to plan on painting that?
I don't think there's a need to paint it. We'll just take all the fire department markings off of it and put a township logo on it to match their current fleet. There's no need to change it, in my opinion. Orange sticks up like a sore thumb. It's not bad to see them when they're coming.
It's kind of the township color.
It's, it's definitely that public works type look. Yep. I don't know that I would propose ordering something orange, other than for the fire department. Just because the availability is so questionable, especially right now. I think red is a lot more common, and that's probably the color, red or white color we should stick with. Are we ready to move on to general services? Okay, so the first, the six lines, again, that comes down to contract. That's primarily going to cover Andra's wages and benefits. Everything else is no change until you get to the bottom where we had a pretty large number earmarked for this year for tax tribunal cases. You can see through midway through the year, we weren't going to, the projection would probably get, have a spending of about half of that. So we increased it by 5,000 to 50 for next year. Thinking that eventually these attorneys are going to run out of clients, right?
I can only hope.
I don't think so. Here comes, here comes the local people next.
I have a feeling the tax tribunal is going to wise up when everyone comes in with their residential properties.
I don't know, they haven't wised up yet. We got bowling alley.
So you can try it, Lynn.
Restaurants.
Well, anyway, our, our team that's negotiating these settlements, I think they've pretty much got things figured out to the best that we can without taking the case to the tax tribunal, so.
That may be what's going to do to make the changes.
It's hard to say.
I'm guessing we have some ideas about how to offset some of the costs that are getting decreased here, but people are still using the services in the future? Such as someone who utilizes the garbage thing and they keep decreasing their taxes? Or maybe that's a poor example, but some of the services we provide, they're still using.
Yeah.
And paying at a lesser cost.
That particular example doesn't work because our commercial customers don't.
No, the garbage, yeah. So take that one out, so, yeah, using our fire department.
We've had conversations about it even with.
So I would guess we'll continue to have those conversations.
Oh, for sure. We, we don't have a choice.
Climbing sugarloaf to rescue a person that doesn't even live here.
Right.
Costs us a ton of money.
We're going to just sit on the bottom and say, hey, come on down here.
Well, maybe you pay for it.
If they're hurt, they're hurt.
Because, because we talk about everyone in the township paying for the garbage, well, everyone in the township is paying for that rescue.
If, if they aren't being billed, and that generally is based on whether or not they get any ambulance for a ride.
Correct, correct, but maybe there'll be a different system in the future. We can't be the only township facing that.
Because of tribunal, you mean?
Well, right. We can't be the only one.
Well, in addition to the influx of tourism.
Yeah, tourism costs money.
It does.
For local residents.
Yeah.
Okay.
Dan, can you put them in the ambulance and then just check them out?
You can't make them go in.
You have to transport to build.
Transport to build.
I can refuse.
It's a fine line. I'll just briefly say if you're, if you're going to, you can, if I go to your house and check the service, you can. We do not, you're already paying taxes. That's at your home.
Yeah, that's for people within our.
Correct.
But for people outside of our.
Right.
That's how we started charging for accidents where we were going to peoples that weren't from here. But now we're rescuing people who aren't from here. Yeah.
Only if you transport.
Yeah, right, yeah, and they don't have, they can say my husband's coming to get me after you get him out from the.
Or go back up there then, these are going to.
Okay, sorry.
You assume it's a woman. I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said.
I guess I just read an article, we shouldn't be using those pronouns anymore. It should just be pop person.
Whatever.
All right. Moving on, shall we?
Sorry.
Onto law enforcement, contracted services. There's not really a whole lot to talk about here because there's really two items in there. One is our contract with the sheriff's office, which we have the new one in your packet for consideration next Tuesday. That is based on a small increase, bear with me, I have it right here. It's a twenty-seven cent per hour increase over current year. So from fifty dollars and eleven cents per hour to fifty dollars and thirty-eight cents per hour. So that's paying for the officer, the fringe benefits and any vehicle maintenance upkeep, even though we purchase it, they, they have to pay to maintain it. So that's what their rate is. It's a, I would say relatively minor increase compared to some of the other increases we see. So fifty dollars and thirty-eight cents per hour, eighty hours a week, so that's covering two shifts times fifty-two weeks and based on the conversations we had last year, I increased my recommendation for upset from five thousand to ten thousand. It was something that we said we would consider moving forward. Whether or not you agree with me is, that's up to you.
So tell me why we give any money to upset when we are giving money through, I'm assuming our taxes to upset already?
No.
No.
We're not.
No, upsets all donations.
Yeah, they're not funded, they're not funded through any tax agency.
Yeah. Okay, because someone's gonna ask me that.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's a donation, but they're paid, who do they work for?
They're their own group.
They are a conglomeration of law enforcement agencies.
That are paid by their employer.
The employer is upset, except for one officer from the city of Marquette. I believe there's an officer from the state police and one from maybe the FBI. I'm not exactly sure. We would have to talk to
Might be fun, might be, it'd be interesting.
Tim Scholender. Get Tim Scholender back on.
Maybe he would be someone to talk about that community development thing.
He talked to it last, talked to us last year. I can call him again. Yeah, he zoomed in when we
So last year he zoomed into one of our budget work sessions and politely requested an increase in funding because they are more active in our township than we are compensating them for. And at that time we increased the contribution from one thousand to five thousand. Have they invoiced us yet this year, Lois?
No.
Is that normal?
Just making notes.
Okay.
So we gave them a big increase last year.
Well, from one thousand to five thousand.
Well, percentage-wise, that's a big increase.
I don't disagree.
Yeah.
As a percent of our total budget, based on what they do in the township, it still doesn't cover their costs.
Yeah, yeah.
But if you, if you take a little cover of the cost, because we talked about even at the fire hall of having an officer, of our own officer and going to our own, it's gonna scare you how much it's gonna cost just for having our own couple guys.
We've looked at that a couple of times.
Yeah.
Well, to rent the sheriff's department with a vehicle that we purchased for them for two shifts, it costs us two hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars next year.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just thinking from one thousand to five thousand in a year and then to go from five thousand to ten thousand, that's a lot. That's a lot to ask the taxpayers to increase by. That's just my opinion. I would, I would say
I'm not disagreeing with you. As a percentage of their activity in our organization, it's probably still not enough.
Yeah, well.
That's what he said too.
The general public has no idea what they do out there.
Well, and that's, that
That's, I mean, they are very active and
Isn't it sad?
Have no idea how much drug, our, our drugs are going on in this township.
They're trying to clean it up, so.
They're trying, yes.
Well, it's, that's a huge increase. That's what we're saying.
I know, I know, but I, I have to agree with their manager that I, I feel it's worth it for our residents.
Well, we'll see what they say when we share this information out there, because you, that, you have to defend that to the residents.
I, I easily could defend it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I can defend it with my recommendation as well.
Well, and I'll need to defend it, so you're gonna have to give me the information to defend it. Do you see what I'm saying?
The specific cost breakdown comes best from Scholender.
Yeah, so, well, even if he gives us some paper so that I have something to show people.
Sure. I, I don't know how, how he has his numbers broken down, but you know, the, the way he requested an increase last year was whatever you can give. And it wasn't him coming here with a specific number. He was basically presenting it the way I just did in that they're spending a lot more effort here than we're paying for.
And maybe we can even look at how much per, per property that means.
Yeah, we might not get that specific because they don't want the general public to know what they're up to necessarily.
No, the cost, the, the cost to the taxpayer to support it. I don't, what they're up to, no, I, I'm sure they're
Even if we compromise from five to seventy-five hundred, you know, I mean, he'd be happy with that.
This is only my recommendation. What you choose to adopt is completely up to you.
Okay. It's just because when we were at the planning commission meeting, there are some items that people want in our township to, to make their jobs easier. And you know, if we can take that extra money that we're putting here and buy that lawnmower that's gonna save time for our buildings and grounds people and save the risk of being hurt, you know, what is that worth too? So just, just comments.
Right.
Maybe take care of the marijuana and drug thing for some.
Marijuana's legal, Pete. It's legal.
Yeah, but that's causing a lot of problems.
Yeah, but that's not part of upset.
No, well.
They're not worried about that.
Yeah, it's done, it's done. It actually, yeah. Yeah, they, there's lots of things to deal with. So, sorry, keep going, I guess.
Alright, are we ready? Or is everyone okay with what I've recommended so far?
I don't have a problem with ten thousand.
So street signs? Oh, yeah. Well, I'd like seventy-five hundred.
Street lighting.
No, no, I, I thought he was moving on, but he's still on upset.
Right. I'm not hearing a consensus opposed to the ten thousand. Okay, I'm, I will leave it there for now. If you choose to adopt something different, that's up to you. Street lighting, the electrical costs, we're keeping status quo for now. We're seeing more and more LED fixtures replacing the high-pressure sodium fixtures, so our electrical costs should be over time stabilizing instead of continuing to increase. So as one burns out, they replace it with an LED fixture.
And they last longer and less electricity.
And they're brighter.
And they're brighter.
The increase you see in repairs and maintenance matches what we're projecting for this year end, which was supposed to add another pole for a fixture in one location. Whether or not we make that happen remains to be seen. If it doesn't happen, we're gonna try again next year and the goal is to try to add one more in a critical location per year. That's what that allows us to do.
And if you just do them, there's a couple more that we should be putting forward to our audiences, so.
Yeah, but the ones in neighborhoods, we have to talk to the property owners first because we don't want to go through the expense of putting it up only to take it down again, right? Which is what we've talked about.
Yeah, it says, but you don't have to and we're talking about safety.
So the property owners
Safety for everybody, I'm just
Can say no?
They can suggest that they really don't want it, but
The, the way it works is the people that don't want the light in the location you just installed it, put the political pressure on the seven of you and the action gets reversed and you just threw money down the drain. We want to make sure if we're gonna do it, that everyone's aware of it upfront. And that just takes time and we're still getting staff back up to speed since Ryan left, so. You good?
Yep.
Alright. Street signs, no change. Some years we spend it, some years we don't. And the years we do spend it, we, we try to do all of the sign purchasing at once and we only pay one shipping charge. So Andy will come to me or Lenny with a list of signs he needs and these are the street name signs. We'll replace, replace so many a year and we'll make sure that we have one or two spares in our inventory in case one gets run over by a plow or drunk driver, whatever.
So, so no speed limit signs in that?
This is street name signs. Speed limit signs are statutory, which are the road commission's jurisdiction. Street name signs.
Dan, do we, you know, pull the, pull them up and straighten? Got several and they're all sort of bent over.
If we know which ones, we certainly
Okay, I was gonna go pull them and straighten them up.
No, don't do that. Just, if, if you have a list of them, just get them to me and Lenny and
Alright.
we'll have them take care of it. We probably have brand new ones sitting just waiting for that kind of thing.
Like the brake?
No, to be replaced when they get bent. So, and keep in mind, our, the building and grounds crew are the ones that go and do that. They're generally not driving their own trover if looking for these kind of things because they're maintaining our facilities and grounds, so.
I'll give you a list then.
Perfect. And I know that those of you that live in the neighborhood see things that we might not otherwise see. We can drive right past and not even notice.
Right, exactly.
Or somebody will point it out to you. Communicate and we'll take care of it. If it's got a street name sign on it, we will take care of the post if it needs to be. Planning?
Question, John.
Oh, yeah.
On, on roads, do you ever get either a hot patch mixture or a cold patch mixture of asphalt?
Occasionally, we will buy a couple bags of cold patch from Menards if there's something that needs to be fixed that we think is quicker for us to deal with than have the road commission tend to because they might not get to it for a couple of weeks. But beyond that, we're not buying anything in bulk.
Is there any way of, of getting the road commission when they're doing potholes and stuff with a hot patch to do? I'm talking, there's a few curves, sharp, when, when one street ends and you're going into another street and there's no asphalt around that curve and there's a big hole right there, particularly at the end of Orchard and Miski that I keep hitting? Of, of getting that filled in with like a hot patch?
They probably won't do it with hot patch because they don't do hot
Whatever they, whatever they use.
Would be cold patch.
I've seen one on the highways and stuff.
If you give me a note with that, but actually I can write it down. What, where was it?
There's another one, it's right on
Orchard and Miski.
It's on Miski and Orchard. And our building and grounds crew did come down there and put in some like twenty-two A or, or something like that, but it's, it's already, that was maybe a month ago and it's already gone.
Is that because of plow then?
No, it's, it's because there really isn't enough room to make that turn. And you're always, I, you know, everybody does it. They make, they try to cut the turn so they don't go out into Miski too far to, to make the turn. And your rear, rear wheel hits that hole or hits that area and just keeps eroding it.
My interpretation of what you're saying is the paved radius is too small. It should be a bigger radius.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that
There is no radius.
The quickest solution to that is going to be cold patch depending on how big of an area it is. We'll have to take a look at it and see if it's even something that we want to ask the road commission to do based on what we know they're able to do.
I was gonna get a garbage can and go up to Freco when they're got their trucks coming back and tell them to fill it up and I'll go fill it up with, with six inches of concrete. And nobody will know where it came from.
Well, now we will.
You believe that?
I'll take a picture right after the meeting.
Yeah.
If we know the specific areas, we can take a look at it and, and talk to the road commission and try to figure out a solution if there is a reasonable one.
There's another one right, right by the pumping station on, on Bancroft and Woodridge. That one's, oh, big hole too. And I, I guess if I were to go around looking at, looking at, I mean, these are ones that I drive every day. That's why I notice them so much. I'm, you think I would, I would be smart enough not to hit it that day after day, but you, you can't avoid it when you're, when you go on to, to Miski and you try to make that turn, you just can't avoid it.
Yeah. So I, I can't explain why it was paved that way. It could possibly be a right-way issue. I don't know, but all we can do is get the list, take a look at them, talk to the road commission and see if they're willing to do anything there or not.
Okay.
Is it, if that's the way you naturally drive, I'm guessing that's the way they plow it too. Yeah, without top, without having the conversation.
It's like a ninety right there. There, there's no radius. It's just
So that one might be as easy as a couple bags of cold patch, maybe.
How long will that last?
I don't know. Depends how, how they put it in.
I think that depends upon you if you keep hitting it.
I'll go get some cold patch and put it in there if it, if, you know.
Yeah, just dumping it on top isn't gonna
No, you're gonna
Trick, you gotta prep it.
Yeah, it's gotta be dug out. It's gotta be four to six inches, I would say.
Yeah, and then if it's cold patch, you're gonna have to make sure it's compact and so, well, cold or hot patch, really.
Right. Thank you.
Okay.
I didn't mean to get off the track either.
You did.
I know.
I was on to planning already.
Yeah, let's keep going, let's keep going.
Alright, so planning that budget, half of it is, is your staff cost, right? Two, two employees. You have your planning and zoning administrator and staff planner. The remainder of the budget is either no change, a return to pre-pandemic use or a change that reflects historical expenditure. And I presented that to the planner as my recommendation and I didn't receive any feedback, so that's my recommendation. And you'll see also that the miscellaneous line is left at zero. So we have to actually put something in there. You'll probably know about it at a regular meeting. Anyone have concerns there? Ready to move on? Zoning board of appeals, that's pretty straightforward too. We'll add the two and a half percent for the appointed officials. Thank you again, Lois. Printing and publishing, generally ZBA does not meet that often. We just don't have that many appeals. So you can see historically, we spend an average of less than five hundred dollars a year for ZBA. Recreation, this is getting back to that number I talked about. The rec millage itself generates a hundred and thirty-four thousand next year on a conservative estimate. We're looking to spend seventy-three, seventy-two thousand, one hundred dollars is my recommendation, meaning almost half of that budget or half of that millage revenue will not be spent. So from that perspective, at the expiration of this two-year millage, we can look at the revenue saved for the two years and potentially pay for that staffing level for two more years and not have to ask voters for continuation unless there's a recreation-related expense that you as a board determine is more important.
So, so the recreation millage was presented to the voters and they voted yes and it was presented as a funding source to fund the staff? Or it was presented as to fund recreation?
Recreation expenses and part of the presentation was to hire a third employee back.
And so if there's money in the recreation budget, can that not be used for recreation equipment?
Certainly.
So when we
If the board decides to do that, the, the millage language was broad enough to allow other expenditures beyond staff.
So as I look at a wheelchair swing.
There you go. Softball field improvements.
Cause that did come to the planning commission.
Yep.
That's yours.
Correct, because they were saying to me, where's the money for these things? And so I could say there's money for that.
Yeah.
If the, we recommend it and the board approves that.
And there's, there's about an equivalent amount in twenty twenty-one that's not earmarked for anything.
So it can be earmarked for recreation, however.
If it, if it's a recreation expenditure within the, within the language of the millage, yes.
Okay, alright.
Yep.
And then I have one more question. Are, are we on? So I looked at revenue and revenue for Lionsfield user fees. There's a hundred dollars? Lionsfield user fee for this coming year, you recommend a hundred dollars? Is the high school not paying any money?
I would have to look at the agreement, but my guess is no.
So, so I, I don't know if I can say this, but I'm sure the high school is paying to use So so I I don't know if I can say this, but I'm sure the high school is paying to use other fields where the boys play.
Probably. So I don't have all the historical answers here, but
Yeah, I don't know any.
The high school has participated in in the improvements of the facility itself, and that's why we have an agreement like that.
Right, right. But those improvements, okay, those improvements were for their advantage.
At our facility.
At our facility, but for that they do not rent from us.
I all I can say is I'm not rewriting an agreement that was already in place.
I I think the agreement expired.
Well, it probably did.
Okay.
And that means we have to renew it.
Okay.
Somehow. And if that means they have to pay a fee that they haven't paid in the past, if they agree to it, great. If they don't, we don't have an agreement.
Okay, all right. So we're gonna someone's gonna look at that.
Yeah.
You.
And our attorney and other staff members.
Because we charge residents to use our social room, I'll call it.
Yeah.
And we charge residents to rent the pavilion at the field.
Yeah, no, I don't know if anyone's rented it in my time here, but yeah.
The pavilion? Oh, I think they have. But I don't know that.
I don't know that. I.
Yeah, I don't know that. Well, someone would know that. So we're gonna look at renting the ball field and if we in the future build those tennis courts for this pickleball thing, we would be looking to rent those to the organization.
If the general show the public shows up to play, no. If they want to have a tournament, probably.
So when people have, okay, all right. Well, just for thought here because.
If we have pickleball courts, I think that's.
Yeah, because again, we have.
And that if you get them as a grant.
Yeah. Well, because again, the whole township tax base is paying for the ball field. Through our taxes, we are. And through our millage, no, yeah. Okay, all right.
I'm not disagreeing with you on any of it.
I know you're. Yeah, so that was just my question. So yeah, I think I think we'll have to look into. I know the city charges you for everything you use for recreation for our children.
I would caution, we don't want to become the city.
We do not, and we would like to do it for free, in my mind. But the improvements aren't free.
Oh, that's not.
And the parks and rep cutting the grass and doing whatever else they do for them to play ball is not free.
Yeah, you can see it right there in the budget. Our recreation operating budget is seventy-two thousand one hundred dollars as I'm currently recommending.
You know, John, that might be two good things we could add, you know, if we can put it together this year, at least for next year. Copies of the millage language, so we don't have to guess. And um, any contracts that apply to this, even the solid waste would be a good thing to add to the entire packet. You know, anything that that means Lois has got to find a couple or three more pages, but if it's, you know, like in this case, the millage for recreation, we could put that in this section maybe.
Or somewhere referenced.
Yeah, either in the very front, put them all together, you know, put all the millage language together, put the contracts in there because it all applies more to the general fund operations.
That'd be good in the narrative.
Yeah, someplace that we can, so we don't have to guess. We don't have a lot of contracts per se.
No.
You know, solid waste and that one.
Water purchase, wastewater treatment. Yeah.
So ball field improvements, you have you have wheelchair swing ball field improvements for forty-five thousand dollars. So did someone did someone say just ball field improvements or that just came?
That's one that I knew we were already starting to work on.
Okay.
The irrigation system needs to be replaced.
Okay.
And the right the corner of right right field.
Field needs to be filled and brought up because it's a downhill.
It's a downhill. So if you're chasing a fly ball and you hit that, you could fall flat on your face because it drops off so quickly.
I could anyways.
We need to raise it up. It's gonna require a retaining wall on the east side. The fence will have to be removed and reset to do that. The follow posts are currently painted two by fours. You know what two by fours do when they get wet? You don't want your follow post to be fair ball, two feet below its up.
And get a metal pole, yeah.
Okay, so um, those are just like those are some capital ideas.
Yeah, and we're gonna have to hire a contractor to raise that outfield corner. And we might be able, if we can find the equipment to rent, do the irrigation ourselves. Our staff is kind of looking into that right now.
The wheelchair swing did come to the planning commission, but the ball field improvements did not.
Keep in mind, the wheelchair swing budget that came to planning commission is not a true compliant wheelchair swing. The true compliant wheelchair swing needs another zero at the end.
Yeah, we talked about that, and it's more than just a swing.
You have to do everything around it so that.
And a space, yeah, a space to put it.
Site work.
And was that brought to the township's attention by someone?
Um, by the board member that's not present. And I thought it was a really good idea.
Yeah, I have you seen a wheelchair swing in quote action being used?
I have not personally.
Okay. I think the people who are trying to fundraise for the play area in the city are looking at this too. So it might be something we, maybe they've done the research to brands or.
Well, we we have the resource available. We've got his contact information. He's the one that told us that five thousand dollar budget number is not adequate for what we should have.
Yeah, yeah. Well, anyways, we did some looking at that too, but.
So based on that, the forty-five thousand number won't would won't cover both, but it's a placeholder for now.
And that's in capital.
That's already.
That's in capital, so that's the next one.
And there's nothing for the ice arena that needs to be done?
Um, some maintenance costs on the fence that we're already working on.
So no, no capital kinds of things.
Not currently.
And no nothing else capital wise?
At some point, the zamboli will need to be replaced, but we're gonna keep that thing limping along as long as we can.
Okay, all right.
John, what do you think about raising the fence in the outfield? Because you got kids on the other side and can anyone hit the ballpark enough to go with that fence?
That's not for for the softball piece that they play there, the the girls, that's not a problem.
There you go.
Now, what about advertising?
Is that's not a budget discussion.
I just asked you.
Well, it could be a budget discussion because it's a revenue opportunity.
Right, exactly.
I think we need to consider it because there's businesses in the township that would participate on an annual basis to help generate uh, maintenance revenue.
For our recreation areas.
I would say for the ball fields.
For the bench.
Yeah, and for the boards on the ice arena.
Well, yeah, I don't know if we had any requests to advertise on the ice rink itself, but I wouldn't use revenue from ball field advertising for the ice rink.
Correct.
Yeah.
The hotel had a banner and I asked Randy if, you know, some of the events that I'd be willing to put the banner out there if they wanted, you know, I'd pay to have it out there. That's as far as it went.
If if we put a.
It works. I think it works.
If we put a banner on the ballpark, I think we'd have to be a two-faced one. You don't want to be looking from this side.
Before you check with that, you gotta check with planning on your sign organs.
Yeah, yeah. Anyways, okay, I think we can raise some money for recreation through.
It's an opportunity.
And then put that right back into recreation. Thanks. Yeah, the wheelchair swing.
Okay, we're rapidly approaching the hour where Pete and I need to be hit the road to head up the hill. Um, we're getting close. We're on the last page of general fund. Um, we have not touched fire fund yet. But the next line or cost center is insurance and bonds. That number is pretty much what we should expect. Eight thousand dollars. It's what we budgeted this year. You can see historically it creeps up every year. If we followed the same trend, it might be seventy-eight hundred next year, somewhere in that range, so eight thousand should cover it. In capital, we have three lines. We just talked about the forty-five hundred for recreation. If that changes, so be it, but right now, that's what I'm recommending. Maybe the description afterwards has to change. If we can only do one of the two, then we do the next one the following year. That fifteen thousand is estimated as one-third of an SUV for the sheriff's department in twenty twenty-four. So we pay for a third of it every year and replace it every third year.
Can we make sure we get an SUV next time?
That's the plan. I won't have the excuse of administrative transition next time.
Yeah, that's.
And I've already talked to the sheriff's office about it. When we discovered that it was too late, I said, you may make sure you plan for an SUV next time. And they're aware of it.
Okay.
I could put it in writing to solidify it for them.
That's a good move.
But the number I'm I'm showing there is based on a third of the budget number he said they needed if they had bought it this year. It was about forty-five thousand with a fully equipped SUV. So obviously, municipal purchases are far more affordable than you and I can get these vehicles. The boardroom streaming equipment, that's a video, that's to replace this camera here. And maybe Randy has wants to elaborate a little bit more, but it's it's to upgrade the equipment that's been here since the building was built.
Yeah, this equipment in here is at least, well, it's not eight years old, but the computer is in there and it's, well, yeah, most of it's eight years old and we've pieced it along and I think it's time to redo the video part of it. So we have a camera here up above us that we can get pointed at public comment and we keep that one or we can reutilize that one probably, but um, just so we have some more camera angles in here and then maybe well, I think the TVs are fine, but well, um, we could do it so we can stream live out of here rather than record all the time. So just kind of just improvements for communication for residents. So if they want to jump on YouTube when the meeting's going on, they can see it live, so since the cable channel went away. So this, you know, and I looked at that, that's basically what a church setup is, is around eight thousand when I found out, but John's gonna check with nine oh six and see if we can.
That request is into them. We just haven't heard anything about it.
Okay, and they've been busy too, so.
They're spread thin, I know.
And also too, like I said, that video system, the way it runs now is through our computer. This would be not through a computer, it'd be through a different device, so. Case if the computer crashed, we'd be stuck, we couldn't. So it's just a better option for us, so that's what I'm recommending.
John, do we have any cameras coming through that door?
Uh, we have one outside.
Before you.
Outside the main entrance.
Okay, good.
All of our, all of the building entrances, exits have have a camera.
It's sad that we have to think about that, but you have to.
In this day and age, you have to. Notice at the end of that note, I I put slash streaming equipment. That's in the event we can incorporate an ability to stream our meetings without using the Zoom link.
Yeah.
Straight to a live YouTube feed, whatever. So utilizing these cameras for multiple functions, not just to record your meeting and post it later, you could also stream it live.
And how many hours a meeting would that save you? Couple at least, hey?
Yeah. Well, it'd be more efficient, just like, you know.
And it would be better for the person watching.
Yeah.
And and keep in mind, the the CIP is being updated as we speak, so ultimately, if there's any higher priority issues that come up, we may have to substitute something here based on what comes from the planning commission and what you adopt, so. This is a preliminary. I think it it maintains a level that's very equivalent to what we had coming into this year's budget before we did some of the other expenditures with uh, security over next door and that kind of thing which increased our budget from the fund balance, but proposing a very status quo CIP expenditure for next year.
Well, we always said that we wanted to use the charter communication money and set it aside earmarked, whatever term we want to use for these equipments, and we never did. It just goes into the general fund. Or the, you know, GNA, but.
Yeah, and I I think as time goes on, Lois and I could probably do a study to figure out how much of the money sitting in the fund, general fund fund balance could really be allocated specifically to technology improvements because it's specifically from the cable TV revenue.
And it doesn't have to be the whole amount we get for the whole year, even if they did just, we just one did one month or it's quarterly, I think, right? You know, even if we did just one of the payments. Earmarked that.
It's sixty thousand dollars according to this budget a year. Sixty thousand dollars is more than paper, so.
We could have some pretty swanky technology around here. We spent that all on technology.
But then that's sixty thousand out of our original budget too.
Yeah, I know that you think those screens are big enough, but I can tell you, sitting here, I can't read those screens.
Well, maybe.
And I'm not the only one who can't read them.
Maybe we need to increase the size of the screens in here and I'll just take one of these in my office. It's bigger than what I need.
Yeah. TVs, the one we put in the community room, that big one isn't actually the the cost of those way down. We could replace those with bigger ones, but it's up to you.
What are these, Randy? Forty-five inch?
I think these are fifty, fifty. The one in the community room's an eighty inch.
Yeah, Pete can't read them.
Oh, remember, these are eight years old too, so. These are eight years old, so this is state of the art when we put them in eight years ago.
Right down.
We can make them bigger.
So we're officially down to thirty seconds to cover fire and we're not quite done with general.
So so I thought, oh, I thought we were here until six. We're not here till.
Well, that was part of the whole discussion that I didn't get really a whole lot of response on. Pete has a meeting at six in Ishping and I have coaching responsibilities at six and gone. I already told them I'm probably gonna be coming in late. If they're gone when I get there, then it's a wasted trip for me, but I have to pick up some equipment when I'm there too, so. I'll be here as long as you need me. That's all I'm saying.
Well, debt service is, that's usually just the cost of what we pay out every year.
The principal and interest on the debt we already have.
There's nothing we can change there. Transfer out is.
I can cover what that transfer out means real quick. It it gets into our township improvements and that's really where it's going. So township improvements gets that entire five twenty-six, nine fifty-eight, of which three ninety-five, seven ninety-six is directly from the road millage. So one hundred thirty-one thousand one hundred sixty-two dollars is general fund revenue, okay? That's twenty-five percent of that transfer. Seventy-five percent of it is road millage and that is covering four hundred seventy-six thousand nine hundred fifty-eight dollars worth of debt. And of that, seventeen percent of the debt is covered by the general fund. So any other road maintenance we do is general fund expenditure every year. And I want to be clear about that because we had this conversation earlier about not spending some of that road maintenance money and putting it back in the general fund. Because it was general fund money in the first place, it wasn't road millage money. The road millage is only paying for eighty-three percent of the debt.
What was that, three ninety-six what, John?
Three ninety-five, seven ninety-six. That's what the road millage generates and that is eighty-one thousand one hundred sixty-two dollars less than the debt. So eighty-one thousand that we're paying towards our debt this coming year is general fund money.
And the county puts nothing into the roads in our township?
That's not true.
That's not, well, I that's what I'm asking.
The local road improvements, they don't have a funding source for. So what they're doing is maintenance.
Okay, so the county just does maintenance?
Yeah, I'd say that's an accurate statement. On the local roads, on the major roads, they they do get more money for and they can get grant money to maintain, which is how they did phase two of Ontario this year. As well as the culvert.
What center?
The four different.
Aldo?
That came from a grant.
Aldo, Montgomery, Erie.
No, that's a separate project. That's that's.
Oh, it's not your time, okay.
Okay, all right, so I'm I'm good. I'll ask more later.
All right, so we covered township improvements simultaneously, but I I did budget fifty thousand for crack sealing next year. Whether it all ends up being crack sealing or a combination of crack seal and chip seal or infrared patching, I guess it can be whatever. But ultimately, whatever number that ends up being, it is general fund money. Not road money.
And that's where it needs to go back if there's anything left.
Yeah, correct. Correct. Yep. And that's what's happening this year. We had sixty-seven budgeted and we're spending forty-four or something like that.
Okay, move on to appropriations. They haven't changed.
Appropriations.
Right below that township.
Yeah, correct. Community promotions, which is primarily the events committee expenditures for the most part, no change. Fourth of July, no change, thousand dollar annual, and that's pretty much what all the neighboring townships are contributing every year to work with life priorities.
And some money comes in for the community promotion from.
Yeah, so.
Donations.
We get donations from Super One. We got some revenue from the softball tournament as well. Um, I forget what that total number is, but it was a nice return for that event.
You got thirty seconds to do the fire budget, Dan.
Can, can Dan have, the manager needs to.
Looks good, Dan.
We gave him ten minutes last year.
Well.
Can Dan do it?
Dan can do it. I mean, you don't, I don't think you have to stay, John, for that. Um, it'll be recorded anyway if you and Pete want to get rolling.
I've seen his budget too, and you can see I did put a recommendation together on it. Um, it's up to you how you want to handle it. I can certainly.
No, I think you can go.
They need to leave by quarter two.
Yeah, so I think you need to go and Pete can go.
I, I gotta go with.
You a little bit. So put Dan up there and he can go through it.
Thank you for your understanding and I apologize for the lack of connection when we were scheduling Thursday meetings.
Well, the fire department budget doesn't usually take very long because it doesn't really change much year to year, so.
There's a couple of small changes, I would say, that Dan will probably highlight.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks. Have fun volunteering.
And I appreciate the conversation.
Thanks, John.
Okay, Dan, jump up there. Get in the hot seat.
Uh, next time we have the budget meeting, we need another table for Lois. No reason for she has to sit like that.
No, she doesn't want to sit up there. She doesn't want to sit at the table.
Well, just give her a small table there.
Yeah, give her a small.
That's what I mean, sit right, we'll get another table for you.
She's got her binder there.
She probably knows where they are.
Come up here. She sat up here when we.
Yeah, you could sit up, but.
Oh, I'm good.
She's good. Okay, Dan, you've got fifteen minutes.
I got, yeah, I could be very, very quick. Like you said, like you said, clerk retire. It changes very little year to year. Um, I kept my taxes down compared to what we collected this year for next year. John did raise it three thousand dollars.
But it is a minus seventeen thousand.
Yes, it is minus seventeen from the previous year.
And that's from the tax tribunal.
Tax tribunal, yep. So I'm just going by what we collected. And I hope that's good. Uh, ambulance transport fees, I try and be conservative with that every year. And Lois makes adjustments. I get nervous. It seems, always seems a little high, but she's usually right, but I, I always go conservative rather than have extra money at the end of the end of the year. Buildings and grounds, um, I kept it the same. We are not gonna be able to put a sidewalk in this year. So that number has been a little bit bigger than it was in twenty twenty. Twenty twenty-one, it'll be about the same as twenty twenty, but next year we would like to put a twenty-one foot sidewalk in. It's not a capital improvement. It should only be about two thousand dollars, three thousand dollars.
Is that the front of the building, Dan?
In front of the building, yep.
Between the door and the fire.
Yep, everybody's boxing. Yep.
Okay.
It'll be, it won't be wide enough that you can drive on it. Nothing really administration. The only thing, um, I know when you get there to computers, as we did discuss and you approved this year for the the software, that did go up to, I believe it was three thousand dollars annually.
What, what page is that, Dan?
Um, I'm working, I should have gone through the, my, but I was just going through, I should be administrative. Let me get.
Yeah, I'm just going up. I'm not going up of that. I'm just going out here. I'm just looking at your narrative.
Oh, okay. And I was going off just the numbers. It helped me go up the narrative too.
Cause that, that really explains it better because you have the changes right on there, which I like on these, on this one. So it does tell me a lot more and what, you know, which I do like.
I hope I, I meant to put it in there. If I didn't, I should say.
So repairs and maintenance. So you wanted a sidewalk and you decided to not get a sidewalk?
We're not gonna get it in this year, just with the contractors being so busy and COVID. I don't know if we're gonna get it, you know, we wanted it last year, COVID, we didn't get it. I put it in again this year. We're not gonna get it done.
Well, not get it done, but could get it approved.
Correct. And it's, it's, it's really, it's under the manager's, um,
Okay.
uh, dollar amount. He can approve it.
Yeah, okay.
But it's in there.
It's in your budget.
It's in the budget. Yeah, that's why I don't try to, of course, think, well, when you put all that money in there, we're not spending it. We hope to, not all of it, but.
So administration salary of printed officials, is that just an increase?
That's anticipated. And that, that was my guess. I believe that's my guess, Lois, without, gonna have to flip back and forth.
All right.
But that was just a pretty close, I went to two and a half.
Two and a half like everybody else? Okay.
And not knowing, and that's, any salary is obviously subject to your approval and.
Okay, all right.
Meeting and training thing has to be.
Dan, the meeting and training, what you're trying to do is hire more people. Is that enough?
I, I'm, I'm hoping it's not, but historically it has been. I'm hoping it's not. And we've been, it depends how people make up training as if, if we're, I should be probably a little more, but if, if, it depends how they make it up. We've been doing a lot of stuff at online, at home, letting people do it at their leisure because of the COVID things. But you're, I, I hope you're right, Pete, and I hope I have to increase that a little bit. But as long as it's in that cost center, I think, and I've talked to Lois about that, we'll be okay. It could, it won't be that much. I'm not anticipating it being that much.
You're not gonna turn anyone down.
No, no, no.
Okay, that's good.
Yep. Uniforms because we, uh, seven, I'm at, I'm on seven fifty still administration. This is where we're two oh six, three, page three. Um, I'm hoping that we can get, we, if we do get new people, we are gonna have to start updating a few things, a few items. Um, it's not, this, when I say administration, it's not just us three. If, uh, we're getting shirts for the, for the other guys too. That's under administration. Fire, when we buy fire gear, that's under the fire side of things. EMS bill stays the same. Intercept fees, don't ask me why. They're down this year quite a bit. I don't, which is a good thing. And I, I don't know why. I don't know if there's a bunch sitting out there. I haven't looked that close.
Actually, we, there are a bunch out there because we have a new person that.
Oh, that's right. She didn't miss a couple months herself.
So now we're back to the other person.
Yep.
So I think they're backlogged.
Okay.
We, we'll, we'll be having some more.
Yeah, I did keep it pretty close to the same. I did decrease, de- did decrease it two hundred and fifty dollars. Um, that's another one. We never know. It depends on, on a run value. But I think that's still a fair number there. Uh, excuse me, eight, ten, computer services, that did go up four thousand and that was due to the increase of the software that you had just approved.
Yep.
That's where that was at. So. Travel conference, I know I'm keeping that high, but as of COVID, just like everybody else, we have not been traveling or going anywhere. And we will, and we're gonna have to next year. Um, some of these are definitely in-person trainings. So I just kept it the same. And we did reduce it this year to pay for the, the software. Uh, and the tax. Was that just the software loss? That we reduced the traveling conference this year?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Just wanted to make sure. Add it to my head. Um, everything else? Small increase on three, on still the same page, two oh six dash four. Firefighter salary part-time up to ten, ninety-one, eleven, twelve percent, ten thousand dollars. Salary EMS, we kept the same. And that covers the weekend? That's, yeah, that's weekends. Yep. Yep. Um, seven fifty under uniforms, firefighting uniforms, page five, two oh six, oh five. That one, we were gonna, I was shocked at the price of the coveralls. Um, I left that the same as this year, not anticip- anticipating getting them next year though. Um, the tax trib- tribunal I was not prepared for. Contract services, pretty stayed the same. Fire protection, you recommended nine forty dash zero, one, zero. I'm recommending zero. I was looking, I was waiting for it, but I'm sorry. I was waiting for somebody to look up.
That's always where the stick can play. But no, that's better than it was.
I, it is. I was, yeah.
It used to be eighty thousand. We'll go back there.
No, 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 this is good. I just, yeah.
Yeah, they changed in the material on the, I thought I read somewhere about the materials that are changing for, to take care of the heat and the fires and that.
Oh, they're, on the, on the bunker gear, they have changed it, yes. That, that breathes more, yes.
Are we up to date with all the newer stuff that they need?
Well, our, our bunker gear is fairly new.
Okay.
What I'm talking about is the wildland and we use it for wildland, um, just onesies, if you will, you know, coveralls.
Yeah.
Um, we use those for wildland and for when it's warm outside, car wrecks.
Okay.
Um, and ours are eighteen years old and they're showing it. But I was just surprised at the price. And then with the tax tribunal, I thought, let's wait one more year and.
Get it next year, yeah.
Yeah. No, but they're definitely, they do need to be replaced.
I know I read it somewhere and I just wondered about, you know.
Yeah.
Talked about your uniforms going three, four years ago.
Are you talking uniforms or bunker?
Bunkers, I think.
Yeah, bunker gear, yeah. It, it has improved quite a bit, especially over the last couple of years too. Yeah, computers that I know repairs them, uh, the computers stuff does make me a little bit nervous. We, ours are getting old in our vehicles. I guess we're down to vehicles and that's always a gamble. I keep that very high because we could have one pump and that could.
Lower the budget.
Take almost that twenty-eight thousand dollars. So I keep it there. And then this year, we'll be, this year we have a little bit more um, expense than normal so far. They're around, was it ten, twelve? I was in, but I do like to keep that high. Yeah, we're at ten right, or we're probably up closer to twelve, thirteen right now for the year. So I do keep that high. And our, and our vehicles are getting older. Capital, no expenses planned for next year. Except for maybe a radio and I don't think that's gonna cost us over five thousand dollars. Dan, the vehicles, you say getting ordered. Is there any plans right now for doing some specs on? Replacement? For replacement? Yeah. Yeah. Um, actually, I'm hoping, well, we're planning on October eighth night, going to Pierce factory for the first time. Um, yes, we, I hope the plan is, and I is to order, and I think I briefly discussed this at the one on board meetings, um, to order in January, February of twenty-two. There's eighteen month out time to receive a vehicle. So that gives us, and it will almost have it paid for by the time we receive it. It'll be pretty darn close.
So there's money for that vehicle somewhere?
Yes, there, yeah, and I will, yes.
Because it did come to the planning commission as a capital expense.
Correct.
So it's a capital expense. It's already been funded.
I did ask the question, but yes.
Yeah, they asked, they asked me lots of questions. I didn't know very many answers.
Well, we did, we did approve that fire millage, which was going to, that's where that money was going.
Right, but I couldn't tell the planning commission that because I didn't know that.
Yep.
And then they asked me how many miles were on it.
Well, it's not the miles, it's just the age.
Well, I know, but I didn't know. So I think we'll have you come in.
Yeah, and I was unaware of the last one and I, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's okay.
The next one?
So we really have the money for that. So in capital, you're not really asking for anything this year, Dan. Come on, come up with something.
Not, not this year. And even the, the other.
The sidewalk.
The sidewalk, but that's gonna be under five thousand. And that's our capital, right? Which maybe should be increased. I don't know. But, um, yeah, no, next year, capital wise. And I don't, I don't know, I'm not, to capitalize.
Well, if it's already funded and get for other capitals.
Not uniforms.
I know, see, that's why, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
You're gonna bid for the sidewalk? Yeah.
And the side, well, let me back up. Okay, let me stick with it for one more second. I hope to pay for that truck this year, but it is already approved.
Right, so it's not really.
Get it.
Yeah, but it doesn't go to our, the, it doesn't go to the planning commission to make a recommendation to bring it back to this board because it's already been brought here and approved.
Yeah.
So, so I, we're gonna probably tear that from the planning commission perspective.
For which one?
For the truck.
All?
The pickup truck, yeah.
It's already been approved.
It's already been approved.
The pickup truck has?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
But for the fire truck.
For the fire?
Yeah, the fire trucks differ.
That's the equipment millage.
Yeah, yeah, that, that comes out of a different place, so it doesn't come out of capital.
Yeah.
The fire truck won't come out of capital.
No, because it's funded by.
Yeah, I, I can see it in my brain now, but you know, they're, okay, I'm good. But, but the sidewalk, I, I.
It's just you're gonna need a CIP for your new fire truck. Probably not this year, but next year when you're planning on ordering it.
Well, it needs to come to the committee before that.
Yeah. Well, it'll need to be put in.
Uh, because it's a millage, I don't think so, but maybe that's a John's, John's question.
Yeah, I don't either. I don't think the money's there unless there's not enough money there.
Make a note to ask John of that, would you?
Yeah, yeah.
I, I did, I questioned that went all along.
Yeah, I don't think it goes.
If we had to, because it didn't make sense to me.
I don't think so.
Yeah, but the thing is, is that.
Cause you can only use the millage for that.
But the planning commission doesn't have anything to say about that.
No, they don't.
Okay, because that's.
Because, because the millage was specific in what it was able to be spent for.
Yeah, I got it now, but I have to be able to explain it.
Yeah, so really they have no role in.
That truck.
In that truck.
But they do have a role in other things and maybe you need to order those coveralls. Because the information I read said that there are some cancer-causing agents in those fire protective equipment that get rid of things that could, could you at risk?
We do know, yep.
Did you read that article?
There was a million of them out there and there's, our neighbor to the east is very, very active in that, so he keeps us all informed.
Yeah, yeah, we need to get rid of them. I wouldn't wait another year if we are able to do that. That's what I would say.
But as you can see, I mean, we're not, there's no money left over. There really isn't.
And you need some more people. So what?
Yeah.
So those questions too, Dan, we can hit the, at the third meeting, the wrap up session.
The wrap up session.
Yeah, maybe we can have some of those answers from John.
And we don't know and that, we're gonna reschedule that, so we won't know that.
So get that coverall cost.
We'll do that Tuesday.
I know, I did price it. It was a little shocking, but yeah.
Well, life is shocking.
I know, it, yeah, no, good point. Yep. Um, but I did, and I think I discussed it, did discuss with John and clerk retire, our um, the equipment millage is up in twenty-three?
Let's put it back.
Well, yeah, and I, I'm working.
You said.
I'm working on that. Roger Zappa is, it has to be worded carefully because it's not expiring yet, but we'll get into that later.
Okay, you just want to make it real aware.
But we're working on it. Yeah, we're working on that, so.
Okay.
But don't you advertise it as renew?
Uh, I'm not going there till I get the lawyer's attorney.
Okay, sorry.
We won't go there until Roger has his final say on it, but that's the plan. Is to get it on there next year. So.
Okay, I need to go. I need, if you wanna keep going, that's okay.
No, I think we can adjourn.
I got some.
Make your gavel and adjourn.
We don't even need to. I'm just, that's the, well, there are.